December, Tuesday, December 2nd. Please stand for our invocation led by Reverend Keith Myrick, Public Safety Chaplain. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence following the pledge.
Good morning. Let us pray. Father God, thank you for this day. Lord, you are the Creator of heaven, the earth, and the seas, and all that is in them. And Lord, we just thank you for giving us another day of life. Thank you for this meeting that's about to take place in this building, Lord. I pray that you will keep us safe, that you will give us peace in this building. Lord, I also ask that you would bring peace in this room. And I lift up Mayor Chair Goddard, Councilmembers Corey Penn, Samantha Ingram, C.J. Small, Ben Reynolds, Bo Fleming, Josh Woods, and Gina Gregory. May the Lord bless each and every one of you and keep you. The Lord make his face shine upon you and give you peace. The Lord lift up his countenance upon you and be gracious to you. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a flag for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite in its scope.
I ask everyone to remain standing for a moment of silence.
If you would, in your own way, please remember, and in this moment of silence, in memory of political trailblazer Ann Bedsall, who passed away yesterday. She was 95 years old. Ann was a longtime resident here in the city of Mobile, and she made history as the first Republican woman in the Alabama House of Representatives and the first woman in the Alabama Senate. That's actually where I first met Ann and started in 1995 in the Senate. And I was working in Montgomery at the time and was able to work with Ann in her role as a state senator. Ann also was known for having run for governor back in the day. So that was also part of her being a trailblazer and remembered that way. She also made a run for mayor some time ago, back in 2005. But beyond politics, Ann Bedsall had many, many successes here in the city of Mobile and statewide. She co-founded the Alabama School of Math and Science here in Mobile. She championed historic preservation here in the city. And she also spearheaded the city's tricentennial celebration. So Ann's legacy will be long, long remembered. Her husband's family, the Bedsall Foundation, she is known for that, as well as the Sybil Smith Foundation, that is in honor of her mother. So Ann's legacy will live on for a very long time. And I just ask that you all, please remember Ann and her family in this moment of silence.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Ingram.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Woods. Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone this morning. Welcome to our December 2nd, 2025 meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put on the off of the vibrating position, the off of the vibrating position. Any person that designed to address the Mobile City Council must sign in indicating the ordinance, the resolution, a public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person that designed to address the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified and pertaining to the city of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given proper notes to the City Clerk office and wish to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address this council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing this council, there be no person to address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Communications from the mayor, from your Chair Goddard, excuse me.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. I want to welcome everyone back to work after a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. As a point of personal privilege, it was the first time in quite some time that I've been able to spend multiple days in a row with my family away from work. And so it was a wonderful time, and I was very glad when school got back in session on Monday because they, my sons continue to fight like they're signing up for MMA. I do want to echo some of Councilwoman Gregory's words about Ms. Ann Bedsall. She was a true trailblazer, you know, the first woman in the Alabama Senate. Her efforts inspired many, many young women to pursue a career in politics. She truly broke open that arena to many young women and inspired men and women alike. So please do keep your thoughts and prayers with her family as they go through this difficult time. As was mentioned, she did help fund the Alabama School of Math and Science in 1989, which continues to be the number one high school in all of Alabama. It continues to bring Alabama's best and brightest right here to Mobile. So I certainly thank her for that. The title of her autobiography was Leave Your Footprint, and I find that very appropriate. She certainly did that, and that title reflects a life of service that inspired many, many young women and men. So my thoughts and prayers are with her and her family, her friends, and all those whose lives she touched, and I wish her peace. Onto a lighter note, I had the pleasure of looking out my window every day and watching the downtown Mobile Arena come to life. It is rising quickly. B.L. Harvard and other contractors are hard at work placing structural steel, pouring concrete throughout the facility on multiple levels. And later this month, they're going to begin installing the roof trusses and the precast seating bowl section. So you're really going to start seeing that come to life. But the most important update of all, as of today, the project is still on budget and on time. We are still scheduled to open in early 2027. As I've said before, I had the pleasure of having the earliest Mardi Gras in 2027 in about 35 years, which does not really help us with getting that arena open in time for Mardi Gras, but we're working on it. Mobile Arena is set to deliver world-class entertainment to our city for the first time in many years, from major concerts to Mobile's first hockey team in decades. And I brought this hat, I don't want it to be a secret, what I'm hoping that hockey team is named. If you can't see that, there's a dragon, there's an M, there's sticks in there. So if the voting's still open, be sure to get out there and vote for the Mobile Mystics with the unique design of this arena. And our great management partner with OVG, I believe, are creating an entertainment venue that will rival any other venue in the Southeast. So I'm so excited about that. I hope you're excited about that, too. I do want to, I do want to note that our Public Safety Department is partnering with Hope for All Gulf Coast, formerly Housing First, and they're collecting non-perishable food items through December 18th. These collected items are going to fill holiday meal boxes for more than 130 local families. Donations like stuffing, canned vegetables, mac and cheese, rice. I like the fake cranberry sauce myself. Everybody chooses their own. All of these staples can be dropped off at any MPD precinct or Mobile Fire and Rescue Station. As I believe, as many in this room believe, Mobile is truly at its best when neighbors are helping neighbors. So I want to commend our first responders for taking on this task, doing what they can to help people have the holiday meal that they deserve. And I'm asking you to join in, help, they can't do it alone. So if you have any of those extra stuffing or anything else, please drop it off at your nearest station. Let's see. And finally, I just had the pleasure of having the most full conference room I've ever had in my career as mayor because we have some state champion volleyballers here in our midst today, this year. McGill Tulen, I don't know why I missed that. McGill Tulen secured its four straight 7A volleyball championship, and Mobile Christian claimed its second in two years. Pretty incredible. These achievements showcase the extraordinary talent and dedication that our young athletes have. And these back-to-back championships highlight the exceptional programs that they are members of that Coach Kate Wood and Mallory Boynton have built at their respective schools. So it's safe to say that Mobile is officially a volleyball city. Thanks to y'all. Thank you. And I do want to call up the coaches and the players, Coach Wood, Coach Boynton, and your staffs. I just want to recognize you here today and tell you congratulations, and I thank you for representing Mobile so well. Thank you. Do you, are we going to take a picture? All right. Let's see, one at a time?
Mr. President.
Everybody.
Mr. Reynolds.
We want to take a picture. Do y'all want to try and do them here or on the steps after?
Mr. Mayor, I've got this certificate of appreciation here for the Mobile Christian volleyball team. I think they ought to come line up along the front here, along with you getting up here. And let's all take a picture together because they've accomplished a lot.
All right, well, let's try it one at a time. Ben, you're to the left. Mobile Christian, if y'all will come down, we'll embarrass you by putting you right in the front and center in front of everybody.
And I learned some facts, two things. Mobile Christian is in District 4, and their opponent that they beat is also from District 4, St. Luke's. So we get good news and then some not-so-good news for District 4, but it's great to know that great volleyball players come from District 4. I also learned because they've won, Mobile Christian has won back-to-back championships, they now have to go up a class from 3A to 4A. So I hope everybody's ready to go up one class.
And as we let these girls from Mobile Christian sit down, McGill Tulen will come up right behind them.
So while they're coming up, it is my privilege, ladies and gentlemen, today to recognize, proudly recognize, the McGill Tulen Yellow Jackets volleyball team. They are our 7A volleyball state champions. Let's give them a big round of applause. This incredible group of athletes, also known as the Dirty Dozen, has once again shown what true excellence looks like. This year's title marks not just another victory, but a historic achievement. Four consecutive Class 7A volleyball state championships. Four. This state championship marks the 25th in school history. This dominant run is the result of early morning practices, relentless determination, outstanding coaching and leadership, and a united belief that excellence is the standard. Each player brought heart, grit, and passion to the court, and together they prove why the Dirty Dozen is a name associated with toughness, resilience, and pride. To the Yellow Jackets, thank you for inspiring our schools, our community, our city, and everyone who follows your journey. Congratulations on your championship, your legacy, and your continued tradition of greatness. Go Jackets!
All right, and that concludes my remarks. Oh, and one before I turn it over. I did attend a community meeting last night hosted by our own Gina Gregory at the Mobile Arts Art Museum, and the turkey was really, really good. The stuffing was even better, but it was a great event despite the rain. So many people came out, and I just want to thank Councilwoman Gregory for inviting me to that. And it definitely got me in the holiday spirit, so Merry Christmas.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved. Second, properly moving, second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for waive the noise ordinance on December 4th on downtown Arloop and January 17th on Myrtlewood Lane from 7:00 PM until 10:00 PM.
So moved?
Second.
Properly moving, second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearings, today is a public hearing to consider an ordinance to amend Appendix A Downtown Development District of Mobile, of the City of Mobile Unified Development Code, Chapter 64 of the Mobile City Code.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider the proposed rezoning of property located at 2243, 2245, 2345, and 2509 Halls Mill Road from B3 to B5.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? Is someone coming down to the podium by stating your name?
Thank you, Councilman Small. Casey Pipes, 150 Government Street. I represent the applicant here. They are a potential buyer of the property. This is the old Farmer's Market property on Halls Mill Road that's been underutilized for years. They plan to clean it up and consolidate it with some adjoining property they own that they recently purchased and rezoned to B5. The current zoning is B3. The requested zoning is to B5, which is an office warehouse. Zoning classification, it's consistent with the future land use map of mixed commercial corridor. It's a 12-acre site, so it's a big site, which is really not appropriate for B3. It's more of a B5-type use. And historically, the Farmer's Market would have probably been better classified as a B5-type of use when it was in its heyday as a regional distribution facility. It was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission without any objection. We've had two neighborhood meetings without any objection, and, you know, here to answer any questions y'all have.
Any question or comment from this council? All right, thank you, Mr. Pipe. Is anyone else that would like to address the council on this particular said item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Today is a public hearing to consider the proposed rezoning of property located at 2243. I'm sorry. Today is a public hearing to consider proposed conditional, wait. To consider proposed rezoning of property located 2243, 2245, 2345, and 2509 Halls Mill Road from B3 to B5. Is that right? We just did that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Public hearing to consider, I'm off. Public hearing to consider the proposed conditional use permit for property located at 2574 and 2664 Solly Road to allow expansion of a religious facility in NR1.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
So I did have two people signed in for that. Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Mary Pettit.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm known amongst my friends as the weeper, so I hope I can get through this.
Give us your full name.
Oh, Mary Pettit, I'm sorry. Good morning. At approximately 7:00 AM on Sunday, November 23rd, my life changed. I was awakened to the sounds of a cat screaming and dogs growling and barking. When I ran out the back door, I witnessed the murder of our beloved cat Vincent in our own backyard. This is my cat. My 86-year-old mother loved this cat. I say murder because this was the most vicious, violent act I have ever witnessed. Not a day has gone by that my mother and I haven't broken down in tears. We have both been traumatized by this. The worst part of this tragedy is that it was so easily preventable. While it was a dog that actually killed our sweet Vincent, it was his irresponsible owner who allowed it to happen. This is the dog that killed my cat. These dogs were known to animal control. They had been called out before. The owner had been warned before about keeping control of his animals. They live over a half a mile from my house, and it come that far. The picture of this dog shows a broken tether. I don't know if you can see it. It's very obviously too weak for a solid-sized dog of this size and strength. Our neighbors are afraid to walk in the neighborhood because of these dogs and others. It is a constant problem. As sad as we are to have lost Vincent, I thank God that it wasn't my grandson who was visiting that was mauled. The bigger picture is that this isn't just a problem in my neighborhood. It is a problem all over Mobile. There must be harsher penalties for irresponsible dog owners. Slaps on the wrist aren't making them change anything. I didn't realize that I would be on the agenda today until a man I don't even know messaged me on Facebook and told me he will be here on the 16th to tell of his problems with uncontrolled dogs and irresponsible owners. I hastily put together an online petition yesterday and has already gotten over 125 signatures and countless comments and messages about the problems that others are having. This tells me that something needs to be done. The communication between the police and animal control needs to be improved dramatically, and fines and penalties need to be ramped up to make owners take action. It's up to you to set the city ordinances to do this. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, and please follow through with this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming down. And I do know this is a city-wide problem. I think about a month ago, I contacted Ms. Keisha Brown. I had a resident in my district cutting some grass and got bitten by dogs several times. And if it was a kid, the kid would have died.
Yeah.
I mean, I know we have animal control here to speak on this behalf, but I mean, if anything that this council can do to even try to strengthen the fines or something, because again, I do know that this issue is a broad issue throughout, you know, the city and everything. But I would like for someone from the administration, possibly, to address, you know, this concern if it's something that we're working on or to steepen fines or what, you know. Thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Good morning, council. Right now, we are currently working with the legal team to redraft some of our ordinances. That is something that is in progress. Penalties are one of the things we're looking at to address that. And specifically, reference the incident that what happened in your district, that actually brought up some changes that we're looking at implementing in the vicious dog ordinance itself. So we definitely are currently looking at improvements to the ordinances, and hopefully, we'll be able to bring that to you in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. All right, thank you for the update.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for coming down. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance is held over 11/056. Amend Chapter 11, Article 3, Section 11 of the City Code to include subsection title Alabama Construction Trade Academy fund fees.
Motion to table.
Second.
Properly moving, second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item's table.
Resolution is held over 47/1471, 47/1472. Consider vacation of all rights of way located within Lot 1 of MAA-ACDC subdivision and considering a vacation fee as a condition of the vacation of rights of way within Lot 1 of MAA-ACDC subdivision.
Move to layover for one week?
Second.
Properly moving, second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? On layover for one week.
Approved purchase order to emergency equipment professional for engine replacement for fire pumper truck, 08/1494. Approved purchase order to grade bar electric for streetlight luminaries. 08/1500. Approved purchase order to precision delta for cases of Winchester ammunition. Authorized contract with advisory council for the South Alabama Home Building Academy. 21/1502. Authorized contract with Bounty Medical for medical gloves for various city departments for three years. Item-based bid, not to exceed $3 million. 21/1503. Authorized contract with Midwestern Commercial Roofers for Harmon Recreation Center re-roofing. 60/1504 and 1505 authorizing settlement agreements and release of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving, second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes.
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, 64058 through 64060.
By council rules, these ordinances will lay over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, 37/1510 through 58/1511.
Moved to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second, properly moving, second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived. Madam Clerk?
37/1510. Recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premises only license to Murphy USA. 58/1511. Fixed cost removal of weeds. Repeat weed lean group 95.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving, second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 25/1512.
By council rules, these resolutions will be laid over for one week.
Announcements.
All right, District 1, Councilmember Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past week, we had a great time at Penn's given. It was an opportunity to celebrate District 1. And so I want to just thank everyone who came out, who supported this initiative. And then we also had a great time in the Tomerville community and the Tomerville Parade where Commissioner Ludgood was the grand marshal. She also graduated from Tomerville slash LaFlore High School. And we had a great time seeing the families out, the kids out. And I just want to commend all the city staff who made that happen because it was very vital to the community. Thank you again, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Penn. District 2, Councilmember Walmart Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to echo the sentiments regarding Mrs. Ann Bedsall. She truly was dedicated to and committed to public education, and her leadership made a difference. My prayers are with the Bedsall family. My second announcement is that we're having our first all-community District 2 meeting on Thursday, December 4th at 6:30 PM. It would be at the Villa Health Center, 1717 Dolphin Street. And we're asking all of District 2 residents to come out and be a part of that. We will be feeding and having dinner together. The third announcement, District 2 Priority Survey is still open, and it will remain open until December 30th. We're asking you to please take five to seven minutes to participate. This is our way to ensure that your voice, your concerns are heard, and that is what will drive what happens in District 2. And I want to close with just thanking all of the partners over the holidays that partnered with me for District 2 in terms of feeding. We're able to feed over 400 families and different residents out of District 2, starting with the Bottomland Campground and closing off on St. Stephen's. So again, thanks to all the partners that made that possible. And those are my announcements. Thank you.
I thank you, Councilwoman Walmart Ingram. District 4, Councilmember Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, the city council passed a $100,000 performance contract with the South Alabama Home Builders Academy. We think this is going to be a catalyst for training the next generation of home-building professionals. is going to be a catalyst for training the next generation of home-building professionals. Uh, we hope that this is going to sort of get them off the ground along with their other partnerships that they already have established to train the next generation. And I want to thank everybody for getting on board with that. I want to thank the mayor for his support for it, and I look forward to a ordinance coming down the line in six to eight months where we'll be able to have a steady funding source to go to this academy. But they'll have to prove themselves. They're going to have to put the product out on the field so that we can see that they are producing for the citizens of Mobile. And this may be procedurally out of order or incorrect, but I'd like to be added to a sponsor to this item. Um, we've already passed it, so I don't know if it's too late, but if it can be done, I want to be added. Um.
No objection.
That's it, Mister President. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Reynolds. District Five, Councilman.
Yes, sir, Mister President. We, uh, I'd like to announce District Five is going to have a Christmas community meeting, December tenth at six P M at E R Dixon Elementary School. That's located at four six four five Benton Spur Road, um, three six six zero eight. All District Five residents are encouraged to attend and to bring an unopened children's gift to go to fostering together. Thank you. That's all.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Flemings. Uh, District Seven, Vice President Greg.
Thank you, Mister President. As the mayor mentioned, we kicked off the Christmas season last night at the Mobile Museum of Art with our annual Christmas celebration, and we had a terrific turnout, again, despite the rain. I want to thank all of our city staff, our council staff, Vivonia, Ashley, Lisa, and Kathy, who are upstairs, Keisha, everyone who came and helped coordinate this, put it all together, the members of the administration who were there, thank you so much. Mayor, we were especially happy to see you. I know all of my constituents were. I, I told the mayor, this is our first big meeting since the election, and it was a great way to kick off the season. Um, also, coming up in the spirit of the holiday, we have a lot of things happening in the district with the Mobile Botanical Gardens this weekend, uh, the fifth and the sixth, from nine until three, they will have their holiday market the following week at the Mobile Museum of Art. The holiday market is on Saturday, the thirteenth. So come on out on that Saturday from one until five. In other news, talking about championships, I've got to brag on my municipal Raiders a little bit. You all have met them before. My six-and-under kiddos won the state championship that was held in Millbrook, and listen to this. I have to read this to you because it's pretty remarkable what these kids do. Let's see. The first game, they won, I don't know how they did it, forty to nothing. The second game was forty-six to zero, and then the final championship was thirty-two to zero. So coming up next week, they travel to Miami so they can win the national championship. And when they do that, we will come back with yet another Mardi Gras parade to welcome these kids and to honor them for the great work that they do. So again, now, these are the municipal Raiders, they are the six-and-unders, and everyone out at Municipal Park does a great job, and so I really enjoy being able to help them out when we can and to, you know, let everybody know what a great job all of the volunteers and the coaches do with these little league kids. Thank you, Mister President. That's all.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Gregory. And seasons to the citizens of the City of Mobile and District Three. Uh, as you all have heard and seen on today, we are already celebrating the Christmas season. And as you look between the uh, the administration and the council uh staff, uh, excuse me, the clerk staff, and also the council, we are wearing the color green. Uh, green is a key Christmas color symbolizing eternal life, uh, represented by evergreen trees that stay vibrant throughout the winter. The Christian preparation is rooted in older pagan symbolism of evergreen as a sign of life during the cold winter months. In modern times, green Christmas can also refer to eco-friendly celebrations as the color is often used alongside red of its association with nature, good luck, and festive seasons. And speaking of Christmas season, and next Tuesday, uh, December the ninth, at Pillins Middle School, uh, we will be hosting uh District Three Christmas meeting. We invite all the citizens of District Three to please come out on next Tuesday, six o'clock P M. Will be plenty of food, fun, and entertainment, and also ask in residence, and it's not required to bring uh non-perishable items for seniors in nursing homes throughout the uh community. Again, this will take place on next Tuesday at six o'clock P M at Pillins Middle School. And also, next Saturday, December the thirteenth, Representative Barbara Drummond, Alion Clark, and myself, we'll be putting on the parades of threes. It will start at two o'clock P M at B C Rain High School and travel upwards, um, D I P to Pillins Middle School, inviting all the residents, not only in District Three, but throughout the City of Mobile, to please come out on next Saturday, December the thirteenth. Uh, Pillins, uh, starting at B C Rain High School, ending at Pillins Middle School Parade alone, uh, D I P with the parades of threes at two o'clock P M. Is anything from the administration?
Nothing further.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Properly moving, second in the discussion.